Policy Committee meeting on this Tuesday, April the 8th, 2025. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to all of our guests joining us this evening, including our two scheduled delegations. Welcome. As always, we look forward to a very respectful and thoughtful meeting as we carry out our role in reviewing and discussing matters related to board policy. I have a few housekeeping items before we begin. So just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded on Teams, and the recording will be posted on HCDSB's website. Please, everyone, right now, if you haven't already, mute your laptops and use the border microphones when it is your turn to speak. If participating by Teams, via Teams, keep your microphone muted and camera off when not speaking, please. It can be very distracting. Please use the raise hand function in Teams when you would like to speak, and please, as a gentle reminder, lower your hand if you do not wish to speak, so we don't, I don't get confused. I kindly request that the land acknowledgement be played.
Holton, as we know it today...
Is ritual history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today on these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
It's a honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Omnivores.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Let us begin our meeting this evening with an opening prayer by Trustee Kelly.
Thank you. Today is the feast day to celebrate Saint Julie Billyart. Relevently, she is the patron saint of educators and teachers. As such, here will be a prayer to commemorate her. If you could all join me in the sign of our faith, Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Oh, Saint Julie Billyart, full of courage and trust in God, you dedicated your life to the service of others and to the education of young minds. May the light of Christ shine brightly in the hearts of those who you teach, and may students grow in wisdom, understanding, and compassion. May we too embrace our challenges with patience and good courage, just as you did. Glad to share your spirit of joy and commitment to the service of others, especially through education. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much, Trustee Kelly. Okay, we're going to move on. Second item number two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, what's your point of order, Trustee Dwart?
Procedural bylaw 14.2 has been violated and is not being followed.
Okay.
There was a notice of motion at the February 18th Board meeting. It was put forward by Trustee Saunders for amendment to procedural bylaw 7.2.7. The bylaw is very clear about it. It says that it should automatically come to a policy meeting. We did not have a policy meeting in March, so it should have, in Feb, March, so it should have come automatically to this policy meeting. So, Madam Chair, that's my point of order.
Thank you. Could we please bring up the bylaw, so we could all look at the bylaw that Trustee Dwart is referring to?
14.2, Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
14.2.
14.2, Claudia. Trustee Dwart, is that bylaw that you're referring up on the screen currently?
That's correct.
14.2. So it says, let me read it, purpose, "An individual trustee may give written notice of motion to amend bylaw. Such notice will automatically be referred to the Policy Committee for study and report back to the Board." So thank you, Trustee Dwart, for that question and the question. However, this bylaw has been referred to the Policy Committee, and it's in our agenda package for our next policy meeting. I do not see any date in this bylaw that indicates it must go to the next Policy Committee. It just says it's automatically referred to a Policy Committee for study. As you can see in your agenda package, it's on the agenda for our next policy meeting in May.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but you have to rule on my point of order. Am I in order or am I out of order?
So you're out of order as far as I'm concerned?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to appeal that.
Okay. So we will go for a vote in that regard?
No, Madam Chair. I get to speak for one minute.
Oh, okay. Go ahead for one minute. Let's start a timer on that, Claudia, if you don't mind? Just wait until Claudia says good. Go ahead, Claudia. Go ahead, Trustee Dwart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For bylaw amendments, there is no provision for dates. You can see that. There's no provision for dates. A key word over there is the word automatically gets referred to Policy Committee. There is no discretion there. So when an item came in Feb, the next policy meeting should have been March. We did not have a policy meeting in March. It should have automatically come to the April meeting, which is today's meeting. So, Madam Chair, there is no discretion. There is no opportunity to put a date over there, because that's how the bylaws have been set. We have done this in the past. We should follow the bylaws, the way they are written, and the past precedents, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Dwart. I still rule out of order, based upon, as I have been voted in as Chair of Policy. Part of my job is also to make sure that our agendas are balanced. I still do not see anything in this 14.2 that states automatically, could be a gray, or automatically to you could be the next policy meeting, automatically to me could be the next three policy meetings. So as my job and with the committee is to make sure we have balanced agendas. We've had two items that have come to us from the Board. One that we're seeing tonight, the other one we will put on the May agenda. So I still rule it out of order, Trustee Dwart.
Madam Chair, first point of order again. When there's an appeal, there has to be a second. Good ask for a second.
I just thought I'd respond to it first. Now we'll go for a second. I wanted to respond first. Do you have a second, or?
Second.
Trustee Saunders. Good.
So now, Madam Chair, I should have spoken after a second. And so I've already spoken what I had to say. You said what you had to say. I think I'll take it to a vote.
Well, I'll just see if anyone else wants to speak to before we all. I don't want to take everyone else's voice away, so.
Actually, Madam Chair, point of order, it's only a discussion between the Chair and the appeal.
Could you show that in writing for us, please?
Bylaw, bylaw, okay.
Let's go to that bylaw, just so everyone can learn by this. It's really good that way.
Let's open up. The bylaws from here.
I love learning. That's why I'm in education here with you guys. So the ruling of the Chair. The ruling of the Chair shall be final, subject only to an appeal of the ruling to the Board by a member. Such appeal requires a second, and the Chair can give the reasons for the ruling without vacating the Chair. Unless the appeal is undebatable under Robert's Rules of Order, the member making the appeal may speak to the reasons for the appeal for up to one minute, and the Chair may respond without vacating the Chair. A majority vote is required to overturn the ruling of the Chair. So, sorry. Maybe I've had a long day. Can you explain to me in that bylaw, 11.7, Trustee Dwart?
Sure. Sure. I'd be happy to.
Sure.
So when there is an appeal to the Chair, it's between the point of order that has been raised and the Chair. Who was raising the point of order in the Chair? So if the Chair rules against the point of order, then the person who's appealing has an opportunity to appeal that. And so it's a discussion between the Chair and that person only. The person who's appealing has a minute to talk about why he's appealing, he or she is appealing. And then the Chair can speak as long as the Chair wants regarding that motion. So it's not an open forum, Madam Chair, because you've got to rule on that.
Okay, you're correct. Thank you for that. So, okay, so you've already spoke for a minute. I've ruled it out of order. So I guess if we're following 11.7, which is correct, we will now go out for a vote. So whether we feel that that, my ruling is in order. So if you vote in favor, you're voting, and let's make sure we're all on the same page here. If we're voting in favor, we're voting in favor that I do not think that's in order. What do you want to do there?
Actually, Madam Chair.
I don't care. Whatever way.
So I appeal the ruling. So if anybody's in favor, they vote in favor of the appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, everybody? Okay. So if you vote in favor, you're voting in favor of Trustee Dwart's appeal to my ruling, and I ruled it out of order. Point of clarification?
Please.
Good question. So the question is, so Trustee Dwart says it was out of order, that based upon the bylaw, the original bylaw, the bylaw proposal by Trustee Saunders should come to this exact meeting. And my against was that it says automatically. And that's up for some discretion, in my opinion, as a Chair of the Policy Committee. So are we clear on what we're voting on? Because it's really important. You guys know what you're voting for.
I'm not. Can I just get?
Okay, Trustee Murphy, so if you vote in favor, what you're saying is you agree with Trustee Dwart's appeal of my decision on the ruling?
Which means then this current agenda will be null and void? Like, will not be the, like, how does that work?
The agenda, God forbid, will not be null and void.
So then what happens if, sorry, go ahead.
It'll get added to tonight's agenda. If you vote in favor of Trustee Dwart's appeal, yeah, gotcha. If you vote opposed, then you're giving, yeah, it'll go on. It's already on our agenda to speak to the next policy meeting. Okay. Ready? Everyone clear? Yeah, I will go for a recorded vote. Okay. So, Trustee Agnew.
I'm opposed.
Opposed. Trustee Dwart.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Favor.
Um, Trustee Powell.
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert.
Abstained.
Abstained. Let me just write that in there. Trustee Yaboah online?
Opposed.
Opposed, and I am obviously opposed. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in favor of the appeal, and 1, 2, 3, 4 opposed. So we will have to add, we will add that bylaw to tonight's agenda. Are you okay with that, Claudia? Okay. All right. Okay. Sorry, Superintendent Bukic, do you have a housekeeping issue for me? We're still approving the agenda. Yeah. Okay. So we're going to be now approving the agenda as amended with?
The bylaw action item.
Okay? Okay. So let's try this again. Any other additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? No more? Is that it? Okay. May I please have a mover to approve the agenda as amended?
Dwart.
Trustee Carabella beat you to that. Trustee Dwart, you can second that, if you still want to?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. So let's go to a recorded vote on that, then. So this is an amendment, and now we're going to vote on the agenda. Okay. So I'll go, so Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Favor. Trustee Powell.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Dwart.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire.
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert.
Opposed.
Trustee Yaboah online?
Opposed.
Okay, and I am also opposed. 1, 2, 3, 4 opposed, 4 opposed, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in favor. The agenda passes. And the agenda is approved as amended. Okay. So moving on, 3. Declarations of conflict of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? No? Okay, seeing none? Item number 4. So item number 4, we have two delegations this evening by Mr. Ian McCombe and Ms. Christie Dickinson, entitled Policy V-04: School Fundraising Activities. Welcome to both delegates. For this item, we shall follow Policy I-06: Delegation to the Board and bylaw 12.4. I am hopeful that our delegates understand the requirements. You will have 10 minutes for your presentation, and you please must stick to the script that is part of tonight's policy agenda package. If your delegation extends beyond 10 minutes, or if you deviate from the script, I will have to interject and ask you to stop. We will also be keeping track of time. Claudia, you'll be taking, taking track. Okay. Okay, delegation number 1. I would ask that Mr. Ian McCombe, please make your way to the center table. Mr. McCombe, I will let you know when to begin once you're ready to present. And don't forget, please speak into the microphone in front of you. I sometimes forget to do it, and then the recording, you can't hear what I'm saying, so. I'll ask you whenever you are ready.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. So let's start the timing. Thank you. You may begin.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Ian McCombe. I'm a parent of 2 children within HCDSB, and a longtime supporter and graduate of HCDSB myself. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the proposed amendment to Policy V-04: School Fundraising Activities. As we saw firsthand in 2018, implementing the proposed changes to the policy introduces significant challenges and will adversely affect the fundraising activities that take place every day in our schools. The fact that this amendment is even being considered again after the disaster which unfolded previously raises serious questions about the priorities of this Board. Firstly, I feel it's important to provide a refresher of the first time a policy of this nature was passed by a previous iteration of this Board. HCDSB schools raise hundreds of thousands of dollars each year for numerous charities. During this fundraising ban, this dropped to nearly zero as charities could not be vetted through an overly restrictive process, nor did administrative personnel even have the capacity to do so. It prompted a response from the Minister of Education. A large majority of both parents and students were vocally opposed to the policy. HCDSB was thrust into the middle of a national media circus with dozens of stories referring to the policy and the Board as controversial and out of touch. It brought up questions about the very future of Catholic education. In addition to the reputational damage, the Board also incurred expenses due to legal challenges, taking funds away from serving students and educators. And yet, here we are again, debating this amendment once again with all the same problems that existed last time. The proposed language is overly broad and restrictive. The amendment states that fundraising cannot support any organization that is involved in stem cell research or reproductive health care in any way, or is even associated with charities that are. This sweeping restriction will disqualify nearly every charity in Canada. Even if the charity itself is aligned with Catholic values, they are considered guilty by association. The policy is impractical to enforce. Who will determine which charities qualify? How much research is required to vet an organization? The administrative burden is immense, adding work to an already stretched resource. And what happens when inconsistencies arise? One school successfully vets a charity, but another finds it doesn't meet requirements. A parent finds fault in a charity which was previously accepted. This only adds to confusion and anger for staff, students, and parents. I truly can't believe we are here again. This policy was tried and failed. Schools were forced to cancel planned activities to the dismay of staff and students. Longstanding traditions like Relay for Life, Jump Rope for Heart, and Terry Fox Runs. When the humble tragedy occurred, we were one of the only Boards to do nothing because the charity could not be vetted. How is that upholding Catholic values? The cost to the Board was immense. It harmed our reputation. In addition to lost fundraising, thousands of dollars of Board resources were lost. The cost of debating, administrating, researching, legal expenses, the list goes on and on. There's nothing wrong with the current policy. School communities are able to select charities that are important to them. If anyone has concerns, they can bring it to council or administration. This is merely an attempt to grandstand and solve an imagined problem. This isn't serving our students. This isn't serving our community. We need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCombe, for your delegation. Trustees, I will now open the floor. If anyone has, we have 2 questions for clarification purposes, and please let me, let me stress, this is only based upon the presentation that's at our front door here. You have a total of 3 minutes, total time, which includes responses as well. So if anyone would like to ask any questions, please put your hand up in the chat, and I'll go in order. Okay? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, Mr. McCombe, for your delegation. We really do appreciate the time and thought you put into sharing your presentation and perspective with the Policy Committee. Thank you very much. As per our bylaw procedure 12.8, the delegation shall be received as information. Okay. Delegation number 2. I would ask Ms. Christie Dickinson to make their way to the center table. Again, to reiterate, you will have 10 minutes for your presentation, and you must stick to the script, please, that is part of tonight's policy agenda package. If your delegation extends beyond 10 minutes, or if you deviate from the script, I will have to interject and ask you to stop. I will also keep track of the time. I won't do it. Claudia will keep track of the time. Ms. Dickinson, we will let you know when to begin. If you're ready to present, please let us know. Awesome. Okay, ask presenter. Thank you. You may begin.
Good evening. I'm here today to oppose the proposed changes to Policy V-04, which would ban fundraising for organizations linked to abortion, contraception, euthanasia, or embryonic stem cell research. While this may seem like a values-based policy, in reality, it would prevent students from supporting lifesaving charities, organizations like sick kids, cancer foundations, research programs, and clinical trials that offer hope when all else has been taken away. We've been here before. I delegated in opposition to the original implementation of this policy in 2018, which caused significant reputational damage to the Board, sparking widespread community backlash and intense media scrutiny. That policy was rightfully overturned, yet it has been brought back to the table multiple times. This amendment does not align with Catholic teachings of loving our neighbor and accepting people as they are. Jesus did not turn away from those in need. He walked with the poor, the sick, and those who were different from Him. He called on us to show compassion, not judgment. To serve, not to exclude. This policy contradicts that calling by prioritizing ideological restrictions over the ability to help those who are suffering. The spirit of the amendment appears to be more aligned with a pro-life agenda than with the interests of the broader HCDSB community. There is no room at the Board table for ideologies or the influence of lobby groups like Campaign Life Coalition. The focus must remain on serving students, families, and the broader school community, not pushing divisive beliefs. Health care is not black and white. The very treatments that save premature babies, fight cancer, and improve quality of life often rely on the same research this policy seeks to restrict. By enforcing this ban, we are not upholding values. We are limiting compassion, progress, and the ability to make a difference. These treatments have saved some of the lives of the very students and staff within HCDSB today. Students should be empowered to support causes that align with their personal convictions, not restricted by a policy that disregards the complexity of medical science and the real impact of these organizations. I urge you to reject this change and allow the students the freedom to fundraise for the charities that save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Trustees, I will now open the floor. You, you can ask 2 questions for clarification, only based on the presentation, and you will have a total of 3 minutes, which would include the response time as well. Okay, it looks like we don't have any clarifying questions. So thank you, Ms. Dickinson, for your delegation. We appreciate the time and thought you have put into sharing your perspective with the Policy Committee. As for bylaw procedure 12.8, the delegation shall be received as information. Okay. So, moving on.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just have a point of order. If that's okay. Sure. I just, I have a question with respect to the bylaws and adding an agenda item onto it. I'm just looking at the bylaws here, and I just wondered if I could raise a point of order with you?
What is your point of order?
So my point of order is that according to our bylaws, it does indicate, and I am happy to do additional learning as well this evening, but it does appear that under 9.8, that if there is any item requiring action or policy decisions at the same regular meeting of the Board, and any item at a special meeting of the Board shall only be added to the agenda with unanimous consent of the members present in voting. So I'm just wondering if the item tonight that's being added is in fact an action item?
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. So can we put that bylaw up on the screen for discussion?
9.8.
9.8, right, Trustee Agnew?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I'll read it out loud, like, items not included on the, items not included on the final agenda. Items not included on the final agenda, as described in 9.2, 9.3, and 9.6, shall be handled in the following manner. Any item at a regular meeting of the Board for discussion or information only may be added to the agenda with the consent of 2/3 of the members present in voting. Any item requiring action or policy decisions at the same regular meeting of the Board, and any item at a special meeting of the Board shall only be added to the agenda with the unanimous consent of the members present in voting. After any items have been added to the agendas above, the agenda as amended requires a majority vote for approval. Okay. Thank you, Trustee Agnew. We might as well get into it. Trustee Dwart.
Madam Chair, you've got to rule on the point of order first before I ask my question.
Okay. So let me just reread this. So I guess really the clarifying question at the point is, the intent of adding it, we said we were going to add it to the agenda, but we never said what we were going to add it to the agenda as. Is it going to be added to the agenda tonight as information, or discussion, or action? What was your intent?
Madam Chair, I think it was very clear, and it's recorded, it was going to be added as an action item.
Pardon?
We said it, and it's recorded, that it's going to be added as an action item.
I don't think we said it was going to be added as an action item.
Sure, we can go back, Madam Chair.
Okay, then it requires unanimous consent.
Yeah. So, okay. So the understanding is that we voted to make it as an action item on this agenda this evening. So if that is the case, and I can't rewind my brain, but that would say that any item requiring action or policy decisions, and any item shall only be added to the, with unanimous consent of the members present in voting. So we have conflicting bylaws. So I will rule in favor of this point of order?
Could I have a point of clarification?
No, not right now, because there's other people in line, Trustee Murphy. So I'm going to make my ruling, so Trustee Dwart. So I'm going to make my ruling, so Trustee Duarte stated that I need to make my ruling. So my ruling is that this point of order is in order. And then I can put your hand up if you'd like, Trustee Murphy, because I have two other people with their hands up, okay? Please? Okay, Trustee, uh, Trustee Duarte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with your ruling on this matter. However, this, we have approved the agenda as it stands. If at all this point of order was to be raised, was to be raised at the approval of the agenda, the agenda has been approved. We have got to this point, we have completed two delegations, we've got to move with the approved agenda.
So we're in violation of our bylaws.
Madam Chair, I have the floor. So we got to go with, with the agenda as it stands right now, because all the trustees have voted, they had an opportunity to vote. If it was not going through at the initial point, trustees would have changed their vote. So at this point in time, trustees have voted, and the agenda is approved, we have to proceed with that, Madam Chair. Although I agree with your, with your ruling.
So thank you for that. However, we have to make sure that we're following our bylaws. So if, if we go forward, we are not following our bylaws as we are entrusted to do when we are brought to the board table. So, again, as allowed, no one at this table knew that this was going to come up at this meeting either, until you brought it at the board table, until maybe a minute before the board meeting. So you also have to give your fellow trustees time to digest the information, right? Because part of our role as a chair, and you know as being the board chair, is we have to give our trustees enough time to digest the information so that they can make a proper vote. So I still think it's in order. This is in order. Trustee Agnew's point of order.
I'm not debating that, Madam Chair. I fully agree with you, that's in order. However, the agenda for tonight has been approved by this group of trustees. We cannot change that, we cannot debate from there.
So we can go ahead and in contravention of our, sorry, Trustee Duarte, I'm still talking. I will give you the time, just because, can you let me finish my thought? Thank you, thank you. So I can't knowingly do something that's in contravention of our bylaws. How do I do that and sleep at night?
So there's only one way to do it, Madam Chair, is by going back, all the way back to the agenda approval, and we'll start from there once again. We'll nullify everything that we have done, and we'll start the meeting once again with the agenda.
Well, I think that, and if any of the trustees oppose that, I think that we need to make sure that we are following our bylaws and we're not knowingly contravening our bylaws knowingly. So Trustee Agnew has brought up another bylaw that says, okay, it can be added, but it can only be added as an action item if we have unanimous consent. So, Trustee Carabella, and then Trustee Murphy, and then we might have to go back.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for affording me the opportunity to speak. I, in my mind, I thought that for it to come here was following the bylaw, that it should have come here, that's why I voted in favor. In the past, when we've had an amendment on our bylaws, it went a notice of motion at the board, then it went to the policy meeting, then we discussed it, and then it went back to the board meeting for a vote. So I was expecting the same pattern. We had it, a notice of motion, and then because now March didn't happen, I was expecting it today as following the rule of the bylaw. So when I voted in favor of Trustee Duarte's point of order, I was, in my mind, I was voting in favor of the bylaws. And so, that it should have been here, so that it didn't need the unanimous support as an action item, because it was supposed to be here. It wasn't up to us to decide when it's here.
So, and I, and I can't speak to the past, because I wasn't the policy chair in the past. I can only speak to my role as voted in as policy chair and how, you know, agendas are built. As I said, I, I voted against. I don't agree with Trustee Duarte. I think automatically has some gray area there, and my job is to be a good governance of time. Unfortunately, being good governance of time, we also have to follow our bylaws, because that's what we're entrusted to do, one of our most important things. So, so I hear what you say, but I can't speak to that, I wasn't the policy chair at the time. And all I know is what I know from, since I've taken this position. And I made with the committee the best choice that I thought I was going to make to balance our agendas, looking at the bylaws with no date. It didn't, if the motion had said something like, we're going to talk about the policy meeting on April 8th, I have no leeway there, right? It goes on the policy committee regardless of how big that agenda. Then we have to move other things, right? So I'm trying to balance the two agendas. I thought it was fair. I got an email, I responded to that email Saturday morning, and then at the board table is when we're, we're sent with this bylaw. So I will give everyone the time to research. So I give Trustee Duarte the time for his piece, I will give Trustee Agnew if she found some more information, and if we need to go back, we go back. We go back, because we have to do the right thing. At the end of the day, we have to do the right thing, and we wrote these bylaws, so we need to follow these bylaws. And if we found some new information, we accept it and move on. So, Trustee, uh, Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Madam Chair, wouldn't the right thing also be to, when we have a notice in February, to put it on the agenda in April, as opposed to making a wait till May? We had two delegations that came after, just last week or so, and they were allowed to front-run the amendment that Trustee Saunders requested. So why were those included, but this was not included? Do we have a timeline on the meeting today, or something?
So just like I estimated your email that you sent me on Saturday morning, I responded to that question, Trustee Kennedy, and that was a decision that I made. That's my decision as policy chair, what I put on the agenda without contravening the bylaw. And I decided that our good use of time was to split one in this one and one in the other one. And this one came to us before. This amendment that we're talking about, that's not officially on the table yet, but it's official? No, everyone knows about it, but it's not official. So I made the call, Robert. Trustee Kennedy. Like it or not, I made the call, I'm the policy chair.
Yeah, but that contravenes the first bylaw that we looked at.
Not really.
The chair should let it come out.
Not really.
So you could just leave it off forever?
No, you vice-voted as your board, you guys voted that you, you're going to, you're going to go with Trustee Duarte's appeal. I already ruled that I think his appeal is out of order, Trustee Kennedy. You voted, we're going to put it on the agenda. Now, we're going to decide what part of the agenda we put it on. That's what we're doing right now. You don't like my decision, I'm sorry. That was my decision.
But did you not also allow delegations that were out of order? Because that motion, that was not on the table.
Delegations aren't out of order.
But they were, they were talking about an amendment that wasn't on the table.
Are you really going to go there, Trustee Kennedy?
Well, that's, that's, if you want to be technical.
Are you really going to go there? Trustee Kennedy?
So you're picking and choosing.
Officially, there's no amendment. It was brought, sent to all the trustees a couple of months ago. It was on the screen at the last board meeting. So if you're going to tell me that no one thought, listen, if it didn't make the agenda, we would go back to the delegations and thank you for all your work, but it didn't make the agenda, and we would tell all the correspondents. So I'm sorry you don't like my decision. You voted, it's going to go on the agenda, and now we're going to go back and we're going to find out what part of the agenda it's going to go on. Sorry. Okay, Trustee Murphy? Oh, you tricked me. You had a question and you've changed your mind? Perfect, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Duarte.
I hear what the conversation and the discussion here. We need to go back to item number one, the agenda.
Correct.
The approval of the agenda.
Correct.
Because we cannot make a decision, I don't know what trustees are thinking, at which point in the agenda it should be. You may feel that it needs to be an information item, somebody else may feel it's an action item. We've got to go back to the approval of the agenda and start again, Madam Chair.
Hundred percent. I think I've agreed with you on that three times. So let's do that. So we're going to have to go back to the, I think we don't have to go back to call to order, do we? What do you think, Chair Duarte?
No.
No.
The approval of the agenda.
So we'll go back to item number two, which is approval of the agenda. Okay, so, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Duarte.
I'd like to raise a point of order once again. Procedural bylaw 14.2 is being violated and is not being followed as required. There was a notice of motion on February 18th, put forward by Trustee Saunders as per bylaw 14.2. This notice of motion should automatically get referred to Policy Committee, which is today's meeting, and this is not a discretionary item.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. I feel that your point of order is out of order. So do you wish to appeal that decision?
Yes, Madam Chair, I appeal.
Okay. And I don't have to reiterate, you guys know why I'm...
So we can take it to a vote.
So let's go to a vote. So, everyone clear on what we're voting on again? Okay, so we're voting on this being added to the agenda as an action item, is that correct? Trustee Duarte?
No, we are voting on the appeal.
Oh, thank you. So if you vote in favor, you vote in favor of Trustee Duarte's appeal, okay? I'm just saying it out loud to keep myself straight, to be quite honest. Okay, so let's start. Trustee Agnew, opposed. Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert?
Opposed.
Trustee Yaboa?
Opposed.
Thank you. I am also opposed, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So five in favor of Trustee Duarte's appeal. And 1, 2, 3, 4 opposed. Okay, now, we're going to go to Trustee Agnew. No, we're not?
No, you'll take a vote on the agenda, and it needs to be unanimous in order to have this added as an action item.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay, thank you, everybody, for helping me out.
It says unanimous consent, Trustee Saunders.
Okay, so, let's move on. So we are now going to vote to add this to our agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Oh my gosh.
We're going to vote on the agenda.
Agenda as amended.
Okay.
But it requires unanimous vote to add it as an action item.
Okay. Okay, hold on, hold on, I asked a question, wait a minute. Okay, so we're going to vote on the agenda since that appeal passed to Trustee Duarte.
Madam Chair, can I clarify?
Of course.
I only appealed your decision, I did not ask to put it as an action item. So we are going to vote on the agenda as presented. Yeah, because, because there's no, I'm not asked for anything.
Okay, I'm really getting confused.
I just appealed your decision, Madam Chair, I just appealed your decision. I did not ask to put it on the agenda, right? So we are going to vote on the agenda as presented.
So we're going to vote on the original agenda?
Correct.
Without adding this?
Correct.
Okay.
I would like, a point of clarification, no, just, I'm talking.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair?
Just a point. I just, just so that I can make sure that I know what I'm voting on, perhaps it helps my fellow trustees. So just so that I'm clear, there was, this was just for the, you know, for the purpose of clarifying the bylaws and the procedure for this particular item, Trustee Duarte is not suggesting then to move this as an action item, is that, I don't want any trickery, so I'm just, so just so that I'm clear?
Correct.
And so we're leaving the agenda as is with this particular item that Trustee Saunders brought forth as notice of motion remaining as an information item, as everything looks at this moment, correct?
Correct.
So really, it was just clarifying that there was some intent that the bylaw was contravened, and his appeal passed. Trustee Duarte?
Is that correct? Because the last thing I want to do...
Absolutely correct.
So we are now voting on the agenda as presented? Perfect. Okay, so let's take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy? Correct.
Opposed.
Okay. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Okay. Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Saunders?
Oh, sorry, opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa?
In favor.
And I am in favor of the agenda. So four in favor, five opposed, so the agenda doesn't pass. So I need a five-minute break. Okay, so I look at the clock, it's 7:59. We currently do not have an agenda that's been approved, so we have a hard time moving forward without an agenda that has been approved. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Trustee Duarte, do you have your hand up?
Yes, sorry, my...
That's okay, no problem.
I will follow the rules.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I propose that we have a new agenda brought to the board, as we had done in the past, with a modified agenda, take the board of trustees, trustees can decide, because then there's a conflict of, of interpretation of the bylaws policies. It's the combined trustees who make that decision.
So, do you have a proposed agenda that you'd like to propose?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to just add the item number 8.7.1, add it as item number 6.1, because that was the first item which came from the board.
Does Claudia have that, Trustee Duarte?
Everything goes down, Madam Chair.
So Trustee Duarte, Claudia is, you know, doing the best she can to get us up to date, so please watch what she's doing on the screen and help scaffold her. So what would you like her to do, Trustee Duarte? She's looking to you for direction. No problem, Claudia, take your time. Yeah, I just, you know, the proposed revision, just so we, when you had to get a chance, put it up on the screen so everybody knows, because we'll have to go back and vote on this approval agenda. Those darn PDFs, Claudia. Thank you, Claudia. Okay, so what happened here? So we're changing the agenda that was opposed, and we're adding 6.1 as a, as an action item, is that what we're doing?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm just going to reference, we discussed this before, bylaw 9.8, items not included on the final agenda, specifically the second point that says, "Any item requiring action, which this would, or policy decisions at the same regular meeting of the board, and any item at a special meeting of the board, shall only be added to the agenda with unanimous consent of the members present in voting. After any items have been added to the agendas above, the agenda as amended requires a majority vote for approval." So, Trustee Duarte, is this amendment to the agenda?
Madam Chair, this is not an amendment to the agenda, because the original agenda has been defeated. This is a brand-new agenda, which is coming to the board with a new...
Thank you.
...action item, so the rules do not apply to this, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I got you on the first sentence, but thank you for that clarification. So trustees, we will vote on this brand-new agenda. Does anyone have any questions, or are we, are we unsure, are we sure what we're voting on this? Trustee Powell, did you put your hand up?
I am. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just, so, we don't have an, don't have an agenda right now, current?
Correct.
Because it didn't pass.
Correct. Correct.
So, we have a brand-new agenda. So, what does, where does this fall? Bylaw. Great. Voting for a new agenda.
So, in order to proceed with the meeting, we need to have an agenda?
Correct.
So, the only other option we have is creating a brand-new agenda to move forward with the meeting this evening?
Point of clarification, is that, point of clarification, Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee.
I'm just wondering, so, according to bylaw 9.2, the agenda is to be provided to us on the Thursday preceding the date of the meeting? This, this agenda will not have been provided to us the Thursday before the meeting?
So, 9.2 provision of final agenda, regular meeting, for regular meetings with the board, the final agenda and supporting documentation will be provided each trustee and student trustee on the Thursday preceding the date of the meeting and will at the same day be posted on the HDSB website. Any correspondence, we know that, the second part of that. Okay, so you're referencing trustee Agnew to 9.2?
Uh, correct, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm, so, if this is a brand-new agenda, as has been referenced, if this is a brand-new agenda, I mean, either 9.1 or 9.2 because we will not have been sent a draft agenda of this particular agenda since it's brand-new. And then 9.2, it does indicate that trustees will be provided the final agenda and supporting documentation to each trustee and student trustee on the Thursday preceding the date of the meeting and will at the same time be posted on the HDSB website. This will not have met that particular bylaw requirement.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Duarte, yes?
For me. Madam Chair, this is no different. The agenda is largely the same. This is no different than adding an item at approval of the agenda, which is not notified to trustees in advance. We can add an item as an action item with unanimous approval of all trustees at the board meeting. And again, it does not meet the criteria of, of the Thursday before the meeting as trustee is saying that. Besides trustee, Madam Chair, whenever there's a doubt in the bylaw, and doubt in interpretation of the bylaw, it's always the trustees who will make a decision because trustees are self-governing.
Point of clarification, again, Madam Chair. So, respectfully, I, I hear what trustee Duarte is saying. So, I think my point in this is, is that it's not the same as adding an agenda. It's not the same as adding an action item to the agenda because that would be an agenda where we would add an item that would, again, require unanimous consent to add either two-thirds of vote for discussion item or unanimous consent to add an action item to that agenda. So, we've established that the agenda that we had for this evening is no longer valid. That has been dismissed. So, we have a brand-new agenda. But again, according to 9.2 and something that you brought forward before, Madam Chair, is the opportunity for all trustees to have a, the reason we send it out in draft form, and again, the reason why we send it out the Thursday before, so trustees have time, as does the public, to take a look at the agenda and prepare for that. This is a brand-new agenda. It has not been provided to trustees in accordance to 9.1 and 9.2. So, I mean, we're in violation of those bylaws because we have not provided. So, respectfully, it's not the same as adding an action item because that would, again, require majority and that would, that would be, or that would require unanimous consent. So, it doesn't really fit with that argument. We're not meeting the bylaws if we go ahead with an agenda that hasn't been sent in advance.
From what I hear, I think the conflict is because now we're considering it a new agenda, now you go back to the original final agenda. As for the bylaw that trustee Agnew is referring to, as opposed to adding an item on a final agenda that's already been published seven days. That's where the conflict is coming in right now. Because we're considering it a new agenda, not just adding an item now. So, it gets a little more convoluted, right? Other trustees want to weigh in?
Yeah, sorry, just, so, like, I don't understand the distinction. If we were to add something as an amendment, this, this section 19192 would prevent that from happening, but we can add things on. So, I think this section has moved, it, it doesn't speak to what we're doing.
We can add it, so trustee Saunders, just to clarify, we can, in fact, we can absolutely add an action item, no problem. We can add a discussion item. Discussion or information require two-thirds vote, an action item require unanimous consent, which is why we're in this pickle.
But you would still not have a week's-
But it, yeah, but it is because it's a brand-new agenda. So, without, so, it's a brand-new agenda that has never been provided to the public or the trustees. It's a brand-new agenda regardless if it's been changed. It has not been amended because the amendment would require unanimous consent. That has not happened. What has been proposed here this evening is a brand-new agenda, which according to bylaw 9.1 and 9.2, has to be sent out in advance to trustees and posted to our website, and that will not have occurred tonight.
So, trustee Saunders, two different scenarios. One's adding it to a final agenda that's already been published seven days prior to the meeting, so it's adding an item. And then here, now we're looking at a brand-new agenda because the first one didn't pass.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the, I think the distinction is the same. If you add an amendment, you still don't have seven days to review it, so you would still be in the same situation.
That's why unanimous consent.
This situation here is, I think it's moved.
Trustee Duarte?
Uh, Madam Chair, you're having this discussion. It's good to have a discussion. But the only way you will know, and we will all know, the will of the board and will of trustees by taking it to a vote. If trustees believe that, if trustees believe that this is not, does not meet our bylaws and we should not be going this path, please vote against it. Those trustees who believe that we are, we should proceed, please vote in favor. That's because trustees are self-governing. This is how we should be.
Thank you, trustee Duarte, but I, I also believe in letting trustees have a voice and ask questions clarifying before they vote.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Can I, can I please finish this, trustee Duarte?
So, just clarification again.
Trustee Agnew, hang on a second.
Where do we vote? Where does it say we need to vote on that?
Hang on a second. So, we would like to have a meeting, so, we're gonna try and get an agenda because that's part of our responsibility to move forward, the business of the board. Right now, we're not moving forward anything. We're not moving forward one darn thing. We're just getting everyone confused, confusing ourselves and getting even more and more complicated. So, trustee Duarte has put forward that he wants to propose a, a, a brand-new agenda. Trustee Agnew says if it's a brand-new agenda that we should have it seven days prior to. So. What do you want to do, trustees? What do you want, want to vote on the brand-new agenda? Let's do that.
Madam Chair, point of clarification, where does it indicate that that is the course of action with which we take, that we just decide to vote on whether or not we're going to follow a bylaw? I just, I need that clarification because someone in the public could, could say, this was never posted, this is a brand-new agenda. So, I understand what trustee Duarte, I'm just, I'd like that to, can someone please show me that in writing where we determine that we're going to take a vote on whether or not we're going to follow a bylaw?
So, we could do something else like we did before. We could vote on your point of order, which is that we're not following bylaws 9.1 and 9.2, and then we can vote on the final agenda. Superintendent Bickeich, did you? Please weigh in if you want to.
Thank you, Chair. If I, if I could just ask for clarification, from my understanding, if we don't follow our bylaws, then anything we pass after won't be binding. I just need clarification on that. That's my understanding. My concern.
So, it'll be null and void, we don't follow our bylaws?
That's just my understanding. I just need clarification.
So, trustee Agnew, back to you. The, is that a point of order? I, I'm trying to get clarification.
My original was a point of order. And again, I'm just, I, I want to go back to the original point that was raised, which was it's imperative that we follow our bylaws. I think that's why trustee Duarte was so stuck on this point with respect to that particular notice of motion item, is that he's very insistent we, we continue to stick to our bylaws. And so, as such, I don't disagree with that. So, that's why I'm saying, in the event that we are, I don't think we can pick and choose when we follow our bylaws. So, if we are, in fact, looking to follow our bylaws, bylaws are very clear that the agenda has to be sent out in advance according to 9.1 and 9.2. This is not the same as adding an item. That would follow 9.8. So, I, if it's a brand-new agenda, it should be following those processes in order for it to be considered an agenda. So, I'm not done. So, um, so, that's my point, Madam Chair. So, I do have, I do have a point of order that we should be following 9.1 and 9.2. It's a brand-new agenda and it's never been shared with trustees in advance and it has not been posted to our website in advance.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Are we able to make it an amendment rather than a brand-new agenda? Trustee Duarte?
Madam Chair, the reason why we are here is because the bylaws were not clearly followed as done in the, in the past, as, as in the bylaws. That's the reason why we are here.
That's your perception, trustee Duarte?
And trustees-
Point of order, trustee Duarte, that is your perception?
No, no, Madam Chair, trustees-
No, no!
Trustees have voted on your ruling.
Trustee Duarte, that is your perception. That is your perception. I ruled my perception and a few other trustees did. It was overruled on the appeal because that's the process we follow, but please do not. It was passed because you had votes around the table. That is not the perception.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee Duarte?
You gave your ruling. Trustees ruled against that ruling. So, your perception is fine. It stays with you.
Thank you for that.
The ruling of the board of trustees stands, which means that the item should have been in this agenda. Now, we are here discussing the same item because we have not put this item in the agenda here. The correct way to do this is to bring a new agenda here. The board of trustees is self-governing. The board of trustees make a decision how to proceed, and, and that's the way we should be proceeding, Madam Chair. The decision is yours.
Okay, so trustee Duarte, just so I understand, you're gonna proceed with the original, that this is gonna be a brand-new agenda as posted on the-
Absolutely correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, trustee Duarte.
So, are we looking then, Madam Chair, just for clarification, are we looking then to suspend our bylaws? Because if it's a brand-new agenda, we are not following 9.1 and 9.2. So, that is, we're not. It's a, there is a reason why that is there. We're not following 9.1 and 9.2. So, understanding what trustee Duarte is trying to move forward, if that's the case and he would like trustees to kind of talk amongst trustees and make that decision amongst us, then I think that would be suspension of the bylaws, which we are well within our rights to do according to our bylaws. And the provision of suspending your bylaws is for essentially a purpose like this. So, then, maybe put forward the suspension of the bylaws, which I believe requires a two-thirds vote unless grounded in an obligation imposed by law, which I don't think we have. So, if, if trustee Duarte would like to put forward to suspend our bylaws, so then we can go ahead and move forward and not worry about 9.1 and 9.2, then I think that would be the move. We just need two-thirds to, to support that.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Duarte, do you have enough time for that?
Madam Chair, not at all.
Okay.
Not putting, and we should follow precedents, past precedents. This is how we did. This is what the bylaws mean. It is the, the, at the board meeting, this is the interpretation at the board, and that's why it was sent to policy. Okay, and, and I think we should just follow the bylaws. I don't know why we're making a big deal of this. It's a simple item. It should follow a first-in, first-out process. It came in first, first it goes out in discussion and goes to board meeting. I'm not sure why we are discussing and debating this, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. I think everyone at the table is really trying to do their job and govern properly and making sure we're following the bylaws. So, sorry, trustee Saunders, one sec. So, trustee Agnew, I think I'll vote that your point of order is in order. So, to trustee Duarte's point, so, let's go around and vote and, and we're gonna, one more point of clarification before you do that?
Yes, trustee. I just want to make sure I have all the information so I can, so trustee Duarte has, has indicated that this has happened prior at the board table, that there's a precedent there. If, if we could get an understanding of, if we could just know when that hap, I, I can't recall that transpiring. So, if trustee Duarte could give us the indication of when we actually went against our bylaws and decided as trustees to self-govern at a board meeting and precedent was set, then I think that would be important for, for us to, to hear if that, if that has, in fact. Because I, again, to trustee Duarte's point, he just said it's important that we follow bylaws, which I do not disagree with, which is what I'm trying to ensure we're doing. So, if there has been precedent sending previously, I think that information would be helpful if it's available.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Duarte, do you have any specific examples or wish to share?
I do not have an example right now.
Good.
I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that question because I don't have the intention. But my recollection is that we had in the past. But again, trustees can decide.
Okay, so trustee Agnew's brought, sorry, trustee Saunders?
Sorry, do you make a ruling and we're gonna vote on your ruling? So, how's it gonna work?
Yeah, I think I just did that. Yeah, I think I'm gonna do-
What is your ruling?
So, my ruling is I believe that trustee Agnew has a point of order. It is correct that we would be contravening our bylaw 9.1 and 9.2. If we feel that this is a brand-new agenda, it states pretty clearly 9.1 and 9.2, we're in contravention of that. But, I'm gonna bring it out to the rest of trustees and we're gonna vote on that. So, if you vote in favor, you agree with trustee Agnew, okay? That we are, if we do this, that we are not following our bylaws for 9.1 and 9.2. What's wrong? Everyone's looking at me with this.
I'm just looking for clarification on that. Again, we've never done that, trustee O'Hernsor Nata, again, to, to my recollection of a number of years where we've just, the chair's made a ruling and then we've just sort of voted on that. So, I'm just trying to understand where that is also indicated. Like, there's been a point brought up about following bylaws. We've had that. You've pointed, ruled that in order, fine. So, I think, would it be an appeal and then a vote on the appeal?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that we're just following that as opposed to just jumping to a vote?
A hundred percent. If, if, if no one's appealing it, then yes, it passes that way, that we all agree as trustees.
Right. I'd also like to, superintendent Bickeich's point, I do think it's important that we can establish that if there is at any point later on, some, you know, confirmation that we did not, in fact, follow our bylaws, that anything that transpired here would then be null and. I think that's really an important piece, especially if someone, you know, in the public, you know, is looking for a copy of this agenda and it's not posted because it's new. So, I do think it's important that we are able to establish whether or not the meeting itself would become null and void and any decisions at the meeting.
Thank you. I have trustee Carabella, your hand is up.
Um, to Madam Chair, if I may ask, like, is it possible to seek some consultation with the parliamentarian if he's available for a phone call and ask?
I don't have his phone number and I don't think he's on waiting because I didn't know this was coming. I, I would have prepared. I didn't know this was coming or I would have had him on speed dial so we could ask these clarifications. So, no, I don't. We're gonna have to make the best decisions we can at this table tonight.
So, can I just ask, so, you've made a ruling that trustee Agnew is in order? So, now, we have to appeal that. So, I will appeal that ruling.
Okay, so, you're appealing what exactly, trustee Saunders?
Well, you, you made a ruling that trustee Agnew's concerns are in order, and so, I'm gonna appeal that.
Okay, so now, since we have an appeal on that, we're gonna bring it to a vote? So, if you vote, hey, let me get this straight.
I think I have to talk for a sec?
You can have a minute to speak to your appeal.
So, I think what's happened is you were conflicting-
Sorry, point of privilege. Do we need a seconder for this?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Kristin Kelly.
I'll second it.
Okay. You have a mover and a seconder. Okay, go ahead, trustee Saunders.
So, I think we have conflicting policies here. I think the reason we're here is because policy 14.2 was not followed. The tradition is, it comes up, it comes up to the next meeting. So, I think that's what the problem is. So, I think if we just had followed the 14.2, we wouldn't be here. So, I think, I believe that, that policy takes precedent right now, so.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Again, I'm gonna state on record, that's a perception. We voted and the appeal won. However, I will still maintain that's a perception, not a fact. Okay.
Voted.
Still, it's a perception of why it didn't come on the agenda. We voted, so now we're putting it on the agenda, trustee Saunders. Okay, so, are we gonna vote? So, if you're voting in favor, you're voting in trustee Agnew. No, sorry, sorry, sorry. This is getting very confusing. If you vote in favor, you agree with trustee Saunders and the appeal. Okay? All right? We good? Okay. Uh, trustee Yaboa?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? So, if you vote in favor, you vote in favor of trustee Saunders' appeal. If you're opposed, you vote, okay? Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Uh, trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
In favor, and I am opposed. One, two, three, four. So, five are in favor of trustee Saunders' appeal and four are opposed. Okay, so, the majority of the trustees have voted that we are not in contravention of 9.1 and 9.2 in our bylaws. So, now, we're gonna go back to the original agenda that trustee Duarte has put forward, and I've already read 9.8. Do I need to read it again or is everybody on the same page there? If you need me to, I will. I have no problem. Claudia, are you able to put 9.8 on the screen? I just think it's super important that everybody knows what they're voting on.
Madam Chair, 9. only refers to us adding an item, correct? This is a brand-new agenda that we are-
Correct.
Okay, so, I don't know if 9.8 is valid.
Yeah, that's just adding an action item. This is considered like the original, like where we were a little while ago? Does anyone need the new proposed agenda on the screen? Yes? Okay. I wouldn't mind that either, trustee Kennedy. Okay, so- Okay, so from what I can see, everything moves down one. So the procedural bylaw moves to 6.1, and then feeds actual one, goes to 6.2, and on and on and on. Okay? All right. So now we're going to vote on this new agenda. Sorry, I'm keeping a lot of lists here. Agenda. Okay. Uh, trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dward?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert?
Opposed.
Trustee Yaboah?
Opposed.
I am also opposed. So we have five in favor. One, two, three, four opposed. Guess what, folks? We have a new agenda. It passes. Okay? All right. So I just need some clarification, and really, as a group, if we're going to decide this, do we really... Do we go back to the actual delegations as well? Or is it the will of the board that we've heard the delegations and we don't want to put them through this because it's not their fault? Are we okay? Trustee Dward?
Madam Chair, it's only my suggestion. Since we started the agenda, new agenda, we need to maintain the records and have the delegations as part of this meeting with the new agenda. I'm not sure we can land an agenda which was defeated with the new agenda. So as part of maintaining good records, I think we need to have at least a document, or at least a starting and ending. Something needs to be maintained in this session.
Trustee Agnew? Yeah, we're in the same meeting.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I would agree.
I'm going to rule opposed to that because I'm not putting our stakeholders through this.
Madam Chair, I didn't ask for point of order. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that as well. You're teaching me so much tonight. Okay, so let's move on to action items. So I don't have a new one, so I'm just going to have to change mine a little bit. Okay. As you can imagine, I just have to go to my proper script because we now have a new item on this agenda. Do you have anything? Claudia, do you have anything on this new action item that's been... Okay. Pardon? Oh, right. Okay. Okay, so we're going to go right to item number five, approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the February 11, 2025 Policy Committee meeting? Trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. Okay. If none, seeing none, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 11, 2025 Policy Committee meeting? May I have a mover?
Dward.
Trustee Dward, may I have a seconder?
Saunders.
All in favor, anyone opposed?
I have to abstain. I wasn't there, trustee Janet. Justie O'Hern.
Oh, sorry. Trustee Carabella, what did you say? I couldn't hear you.
I'm going to abstain because I was not at that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, that's February 11. Okay. Perfect. So we have a majority. The motion passes and the minutes are approved. Okay. Now we're going to move into item six, action items. Claudia, Superintendent Bakich, I know it's kind of a sidebar. Do you need a few minutes, or are we good to proceed? We're okay? Okay, I want to make sure you guys are feeling okay. Okay, good. Okay. So the first action item we have on here is 6.1 HCDSB procedural bylaw, 6.1.1 Amendment to HCDSB procedural bylaw, Article 7.2.7 by trustee Saunders, that we recommend that this policy be forwarded to the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting for approval. May I please have a mover?
I'll move it.
Trustee Saunders, may I please have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy. Trustee Saunders, you now have the floor. Sorry, trustee Saunders, what do you have?
Sorry.
Thank you trustee Saunders. I will now open the floor if anyone has any questions.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just got kicked off the internet. I do have... Can I put my hand up manually, like old-fashioned?
You may, trustee Agnew. Please feel free, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a question with respect to this. So it indicates that this has been an administrative error. Can someone indicate where this administrative error... I know we went through a fulsome review of our bylaws only a couple of years ago. And so I'm just wondering if this is being indicated as an administrative bylaw or administrative error. Where did that administrative... Was it written down somewhere and it got misspelled or wrongly transcribed? So can someone indicate that where this has been an administrative error in this particular bylaw? Where would this have originated from that we are getting an administrative error?
Thank you trustee Agnew. Trustee Saunders, I guess that's for you to answer.
Oh, you know what? So I'm sure it must have happened when they were developing the bylaws. I don't know. Wasn't here when it was developed. So it would have to be somebody who actually wrote up the bylaws that would probably be able to speak to that. But I would just say it was a mistake when they were putting it together.
Follow-up, Madam Chair? Sorry, trustee Saunders and trustee Agnew. Superintendent Bakich has some intel.
So sorry for the delay. I have to get my charger. I can speak to that. I did make inquiries with the two executive assistants in the director's office, and they did trace it back to, I believe, 2002. There has been no administrative error. There's been no inappropriate or incorrect information.
Thank you to Superintendent Bakich. Madam Chair? Yes, trustee Agnew.
Okay, so that's what I was looking for. So just, you know, again, if it's an administrative error, then absolutely I think that we should rectify that. But it sounds like it's not an administrative error, so that I'm just wondering then what the... What the reason is for making this change? If it cannot actually be traced back to anything administrative? Like, I'm just wondering where the impetus was to bring this change forward if it's not actually directly tied to any type of administrative error as was indicated in the notice of motion.
Thank you trustee Agnew. And trustee Saunders, just if you would like some feedback from Superintendent Bakich and her investigation on that? Go ahead.
Yeah, just to be consistent with the rest of the bylaw. I think we want everywhere else it says ad hoc committee slash standing committee, so just to be consistent, so.
Thank you. Follow-up? Anyone else have their hand up? Oh, who got there first? Trustee Kennedy?
To you, Madam Chair. Just wondering, how many... This is to you, not to trustee Saunders. How many standing committees do we have at the board? What are they?
Superintendent Bakich?
Uh, let me see. Standing committee, I might have to reach out to my fellow superintendent. So we do have a standing committee of... And I believe actually trustee Kennedy that they're listed in our bylaws. One second, I'm going to try and find that. Claudia might be able to find it quicker than I can. One of them, of course, is the Policy Committee. It's not a statutory committee, it's a standing committee. Just see, we have... So we have under 2.25. You'll have a list of the standing committees. We have the Employee Assistance Program Committee, Policy Committee, Salary and Bargaining Advisory Committee. I believe that we have a Bullying Prevention Committee, but I would need clarification from either the director or one of the superintendents.
Thank you.
The statutory committee, sorry, you're under 2.26.
Yeah, if we all go to our bylaws, page 2 of 19, it says on here amended, 2.25 lists the standing committees, trustee Kennedy, and 2.26 lists statutory committees. I think we're just trying... Is there anything else that's not on understanding committee or statutory committee here? Director Klein?
Again, not to complain. Would have been nice to know this was coming, just in terms of that. It's not as clear-cut as you think, and I'd have to... I know somewhere on my desk is a list of these, but some of them take on the reputation of being a standing committee or not. But when you follow back, it's not necessarily a standing committee. These things evolve over time, particularly since 2002. You can see how one assumes something is this type of committee. It's not necessarily so. So I don't have clear answers for every one of them right now. But I do know there are some where we think they're standing and they're not. They're ad hoc. Or adhocs seem to never end. Some have roots in the work of boards or previous boards, some don't. Superintendent Loffs?
To you, Madam Chair, to you, Madam Chair, if that's okay. So I just know we have the standing committees or statutory committee, the audit committee, policy committee, like you mentioned already, CAC and CPIC or something. I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for, if that the answer was.
Thank you Superintendent Loffs. And you know, really, maybe Director Klein, would it be possible? I mean, we still have to go through the Policy Committee and depend on what happened here, it goes to the board anyways. Could you maybe send us, if there's anything that's not in our bylaws that we already have at our disposal that's missing from the standing committee or statutory committee? Would that be something you would have an appetite for, to send it to us at a later date?
Just looking for committees and what they are.
I think that's what trustee Kennedy is looking for. Yep.
We could do that.
Perfect.
I can.
Yep.
Follow-up, Madam Chair?
Uh, sure, trustee Kennedy.
Can you also maybe... Like, for instance, do we have any chairs? If you go back to the bylaw, was it standing committee that's being added? I forget, there's a red... It was in red. Was it standing that's being added? Standing. The standing committees that were there, EAP, policy, you know, policy, salary and bargaining, are all those committees, standing committees, do all those have a trustee as chair right now? Those three?
Thank you trustee Kennedy. To you, Director Klein, to whomever you'd like to throw that to.
I'd look to the wisdom of the crowd here. I don't think so. But again, I don't think so. Standing committees you're talking about?
Standing is the red. The page changes, but I think it was standing committee in red.
That's correct, trustee Saunders.
Yeah, so then there's three of them. So we know clearly trustee O'Hern Schonat is the trustee chair of policy, and then there's EAP and salary and bargaining. Maybe it's Superintendent...
I think so. There's people here who sit on that. I don't remember terms of reference, or I think it's fairly...
It's kind of like the discipline committee on the salary and bargaining. The chairs can change from meeting to meeting, but it's generally a trustee on that one. Because we're... Mr. Powell and I, salary and bargaining. Yeah, but it changes. Yes, Superintendent Loffs?
Just to speak to the audit committee, which we're governed by Ontario Regulation 361-10, and it does note that it does not require the chair of the audit committee to be a trustee, which is verification, it's from the regulations.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, I'm going to move on to trustee Powell. And then trustee Kelly is right next.
Okay, what is the feasibility, though, of having trustees on as chair?
Thank you trustee Powell. Sorry, it's getting like... What are you asking? The purpose behind the amendment? You can't really ask intent, to be quite honest. Clarification questions, trustee Saunders?
Clarification.
The question is how many...
I think the clarification is the need, the amendment. The positive to this amendment, I think that's...
Yeah, I think most of the committees have trustees on them now. So I mean, it would just mean that one of them would have to be the chair.
Okay, thank you trustee Saunders. Do you have a follow-up, trustee Powell? I don't know if that's necessary because Superintendent Loffs spoke to the audit committee where we don't have any trustees on that committee because... Trustees of the chair, pardon me. Pardon me, I didn't say the word. I meant the word. Yep.
I'm still confused, but I guess the other question too is there was a mention of the wording ad hoc, standing committee, other bylaws. Sure. Error, but other bylaws.
Thank you. Thank you trustee Powell. And I think what I'm hearing, trustee Saunders, would be, are there any other bylaws that this conflicts with? Is that your question? Or did I mishear that?
Uh, no, you... I might have... Sorry, I'm having trouble speaking today. The wording of ad hoc and standing committee, like you added in standing committee, right? We're adding in standing committee.
Correct.
But it was mentioned in the explanation that this wording stands in other bylaws. Bylaws, I guess? Bylaws, but where... Why is... Is that in every other bylaw that is partnered ad hoc and standing committee?
So trustee Powell, thank you trustee Powell. I think I... Trustee Saunders, I think trustee Powell's... What are the other bylaws that this is referenced to?
Well, I mean, this is 7.2, ad hoc, standing committee, so this speaks specifically to that. So if there's other committees that need to be adjusted, I imagine they would have to be adjusted. Be consistent with this.
So if you look at our bylaws, you've got a... 7.2, the whole thing is talking about ad hoc and standing committees. It talks about the establishment, the composition, election of chair. And just, it doesn't talk who's the chair. It just says about electing a chair at their first meeting. I'm quickly reading through it. Trustee Powell, do that... Trustee Powell, do that, oh, Superintendent Bickeich, please feel free.
Thanks, chair, and maybe I can offer some clarification. I think the way that it's written, trustee Saunders, in 7.2, it's a title of that section, from what I understand, in speaking with some of our other senior team leaders, the slash means and/or, so this section is about ad hoc and/or standing committees, so and. So in 7.2.1, for an example, it's talking about the establishment of both of these types of committees, and then if you look further at 7.2.6, the existence is specifically about an ad hoc committee. So by definition, they're not the same type of committee. An ad hoc committee is designed for a specific purpose and has really a specific time period, such as the school uniform committee that we had in the past. So it starts with a, you know, a mandate, and then it works through it, and then it's dissolved once it reaches that mandate. So we do have variations of types of committees. The standing committee doesn't necessarily have a chair as a trustee, especially, I would say, for an example, we refer to the employee assistance committee, I believe the chair there is superintendent Oldman, as sort of the specialist for that type of committee. And then we do have, like we've discussed, variations of chairs, when we refer to policy committee, that's an obvious one. And then, yeah, I think that's the definition of how they're, how it's been defined in the bylaws. So that's why it appears that way, it's not as the same always.
Okay, well, I mean, what I'm looking at.
Sorry, sorry, thank you, I want to thank Superintendent Bickeich, she's always helpful. Thank you, Superintendent Bickeich. Trustee Saunders?
Sorry, so 7.2.6 talks about existence of an ad hoc committee, farther down it talks about a standing committee, and then it talks about non-members, only an ad hoc committee. So if it's, it would stand to reason that you would say ad hoc committee and have another discussion about standing committee, so it appears to be obvious that the standing committee was omitted from here, probably an error, and it just seems to be, to bring it to consistency. So I, that's about it.
So trustee Saunders, I've got your, we can't assume, unless we have data or facts, it never happens, so we don't know why it's not here, there might be intent, but we don't know why, so please stop saying that it's an error, because there's no proof of that, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Please, thank you, I would appreciate that. So, moving on, trustee Kennedy, your hand is up?
Oh, just, I don't know, when it says standing committee 2.25, I mean, the policy committee is a standing committee, it says in the bylaw, so does that mean the policy committee, as it stands, technically doesn't have to have a trustee as chair? Or is it because it's overridden in the Education Act?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Bickeich, but I don't think we have anyone else on this committee that's not a trustee, so unless Claudia wants to be the chair, which I don't think she does after tonight. Follow up, trustee Kennedy?
No, I just think, and I just have a question, are standing committees, are they in the Education, like, statutory, I think the audit is, because superintendent Loffs just mentioned it, so I imagine they all would be. CPIC I know is in the Education Act and audit, but are standing committees just, they're not in the Education Act, their trustees have created these? They could have been ad hoc, they turned into standing, they could go back the other way, whatever. So they're not, they're not actually in the act, right? They're created by, on a board level basis, or individual board basis, is that right?
Trustee Kennedy? Director Klein?
Yes, in fact, I think in some of our documents, standing and statutory get intermixed, so that makes it a little confusing sometimes, too. Almost understand it's statutory, but yeah.
Thank you. Emmy, the trustee, my gosh, Superintendent Bickeich?
I can just add to that, statutory committees are governed by a regulation, so it's within the act, and that's why you see the right attached to the statutory committee, like CPIC or CAC.
Thank you, Superintendent Bickeich. Trustee Kennedy, your hand is still up?
Yeah, so I would just think, maybe this, if there's a debate thing for that for later, but I just think it may be appropriate, trustees have created the committee of the board as that a trustee should be a chair of those committees, because they're not, they're not, they're not specific to the Education Act, where they're not required for the audit, for example. So I just think it seems appropriate that trustees, the board trustees created the committee, that chair of that committee should be a trustee.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Any other questions? I would like to quickly speak to that. Second term as a trustee, and I'm just trying to understand why we want to limit who's chair of committees, when we have very excellent trustee and non-trustees in our community, in our schools, that can chair ad hoc committees and standing committees, probably better than I could, so I just want to make that comment. Okay, so, I don't see any more questions, I'm going to move forward with the vote, but first I will let trustee Saunders close.
No, I think we've said everything, just to consistency.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now voting on, which actually on the new agenda, is 6.1, which is the HCDSB bylaw. I will be going for a recorded vote, once I get my act together. Okay, trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert?
Opposed.
Trustee Yaboah on line? Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
I am opposed, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 are in favor, 1, 2, 3, 4 are opposed. This action item will be moved forward to the regular board meeting, the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting. Okay, so let's move on, which is now item 6.2, previously 6.1. Policy V, sorry, let me just get my act together. Okay, so the first action, second action item on our agenda is policy V dash 01, use of school grounds and community use of school facilities. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends the policy V dash 01, use of school grounds and community use of school facilities, be forwarded to the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, may I please have a seconder? I'll second it. Thank you, trustee Agnew. Superintendent Merrick, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll make it short, there's mostly just housekeeping changes to the policy, as you see in red there, but obviously, any questions that trustees may have on this, on this policy?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, I will now open to the floor, open the floor if there's any questions. I see, trustee McGuire?
Yeah, thank you for your chair, thanks for bringing this policy. Tonight, I was just reading it over, and on the 7th page and first bullet, there's a reference to the Ontario School Equity Strategy, I'm not sure if I'm referencing that properly, but it struck out, and it's replaced with our own policy, which I'm not opposed to, I'm just wondering why the previous, specifically the Ontario, like, the HCDSB staff are committed to the elimination of discrimination, as outlined in Ontario's Equity and Inclusive Education Strategy. Is that, like, why has that struck out? Is it outdated? Was there something different? Or, like, I just wanted to better understand that, thank you.
Thank you, trustee McGuire, good clarifying question. No offense, Director Klein, but I think we'll go right to Superintendent Merrick for that one.
I could pass it back, Emmy, do you want to talk to that one?
Sorry, trustee McGuire, can you repeat that? I was trying to see where you're, where you're looking.
Yeah, the first whole point, right there, she was just wondering why that's been, she was just being clear.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, that is, it's because it's covered in our policy, and it becomes redundant language. Yeah, it's just simplifying language.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, too, Superintendent Bickeich. Trustee McGuire, do you have any follow up? No, you're good, okay, perfect. Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was just wondering if I could get a bit of understanding about how the fields, how, when fields are rented or used, high school fields in particular, and how we decide which facilities gets rented, how much each field is used. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, so I think trustee is looking for the vetting of the high school properties and how you rent them.
Yes, I could talk to that. So first off, this policy is talking about community use, this is after hours use, not during the school day use, so in our procedure that we have underneath this policy, community use would be weekday use after 6:00 PM, or weekend use, or use in the summertime when school's not in session, that would be our, what we're covering in this policy here. I mean, when we're booking permits, so, you know, we open up our schools, our, you know, our schools are all taxpayer funded, so there's an expectation that taxpayers can use up our schools after hours, as they, as they see fit. I don't know if that's me or not, but I'll move my stuff away. So we offer up our schools after hours for community use. There's a priority sequence of how people can book. Our first options, our first priority is that the schools, if they have evening sporting events, or, you know, sometimes weekend events at their schools, they'll book in first, and that applies to both fields and gyms, so they have, you know, they have, you know, parentage interviews, or sporting events in their gyms, they'll book into those spaces as well. Second up is parishes, so parishes will book in next, then it goes to the municipalities, then it would go to nonprofit groups that may come, that won't come through the municipality, and then finally, it's for-profit groups. So that's kind of our priority sequence of people who book in. Typically, the groups that come in, they're looking for a specific facility that has, you know, certain lines on it, certain sizes of gyms or fields, sometimes locations, so I mean, we offer facilities all across Halton, you know, a group from Georgetown, that's a chair, but likely doesn't want to have a facility in Burlington or South Oakville, they're going to look for a facility in their area. We even get that across certain municipalities, where, you know, people want to stay in South Burlington, and then they don't want to go to North Burlington, so they'll try and do it where their, their participants are located. That's typically how it's booked in, you know, it's based on preference, we try our best to spread it out across all of our facilities. I would say it's getting fairly easy to do that now, because most of our facilities are full, there's very few holes, especially in our, in our bigger gyms, and our, and our turf facilities especially, it's very few holes in there in the schedule, so there's, the number of bookings are fairly evenly spread across that. With respect to turf fields, you know, Monday to Thursday evening, weekday evenings are very popular, I'd say most of our turf fields are booked just about every evening. Fridays are a little less popular, and then weekends, it depends on what the group is doing. But where you might see discrepancies in that, is that if a group, say, only runs, it's a soccer group, and they run from May, or say, June until August, and then another group at a different school might run from May until August, there's going to be, you know, a few weeks where the group isn't at one school, and a group's at a different school, but that's where the difference is. For example, I looked at our, all of our Oakville schools, the, and looked at how many days they're booked through May, June, July, and August. I came up with Holy Trinity has 62 days where there's bookings, Loyola has 64, and Aquinas has 69, so they're, I mean, they're pretty close. I didn't look at exactly how many hours, that's a little bit more of a deep dive, but they're all within, you know, across four months, there's, the difference is seven days of booking, so they're pretty close, and that's, you know, just kind of by nature, because they all are fairly full, are full of bookings.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow up?
Just one follow up question about, like, security on these fields, like, how, what do neighbors have access to, or, I don't know what the word is, resource to, to help them if there's any vandalism, or excessive noise, or, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Superintendent Merrick?
Through you, Chair. So we do require that, you know, we kind of operate it as a municipal park, and if our outdoor fields, we expect that any permit holders use it in coordination or in concert with any municipal bylaws. The bylaws change a little bit from municipality to municipality, but they're, for the most part, fairly similar. If a resident or a neighbor notices a group violating any municipal bylaws, there are parks numbers they can call, and we have agreements with municipalities to, for them to respond to that, and I guess, address the outage there. If they are, you know, vandalizing, you know, starting fires, spray painting fields, they need to call the cops then, so, and they can, they can come address that. So that would be the kind of the two avenues to address that during after hours.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I don't see anyone's hand up. Trustee Carabella, do you have another clarifying?
I will allow it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, everybody, so I don't see any more questions, so let's put it to a recorded vote, we are voting on 6.2, policy V dash 01, use of school grounds and community use of school facilities. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboah on line?
In favor.
Thank you, I am also in favor. This unanimously passes, it will be moved to the board, the next board meeting, the policy brought forward to the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting. Okay, moving on, so item 6.3, policy V dash 04, school fundraising activities. This policy was referred back to the policy committee at the February 18, 2025 board meeting. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy V dash 04, school fundraising activities, be forwarded to the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, may I please have a seconder? Trustee Carabella? Thank you. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I did want to make an amendment, and I sent the notice of amendment to.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, we do have it, so we'll just give Claudia a minute to bring it up to the screen, but all trustees have seen it, the board meeting has seen it, so we'll put it, get a mover and a seconder shortly. Thank you, so I will need a mover. Trustee Carabella, I will assume you'll be the mover for that?
Yeah, I'll move mine. Well, I should read, do I need to read it first?
No, I need to have a seconder, so then it actually is owned by the policy committee. So I need a seconder on it.
Right, but don't I have to read it first and move it, and then there's a seconder? No, okay. Oh, yeah, it's there, okay, I move it.
Yeah. Okay, so trustee Carabella moved it, we need a seconder?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy, second it? Okay, trustee Carabella, you can speak to the amendment.
Okay, well, I'd like to read it out loud, before I start speaking to it. I'd like to read the amendment, it says, "In keeping with the teachings of the Catholic Church on the sacredness of life, from conception to natural death, school and/or board fundraising efforts may not be directed to any registered charity or nonprofit, including subsidiaries, affiliates, and associates, that in any way support advocacy programs, financial or material support for abortion, contraception, euthanasia, or human embryonic stem cell research." So may I speak to it now?
You may, trustee Carabella, yeah.
Thank you. I bring this amendment forward, because as a Catholic school board, we need to be very clear that we uphold Catholic teaching in all that we do, in particular, to uphold the sanctity of life, the sacredness of life from conception to natural death. The sanctity of life is non-negotiable tenet of our Catholic faith. In our morally eroding and confused society about life and death, we can be a beacon of light, and be a very clear witness to life, uphold human dignity, and promote a culture of life. So we need to be vigilant, aware, protect, and promote it. This amendment is one way to achieve that. Point of order, just for noise. Okay, thank you. Abortion, abortifacient, contraception, euthanasia, and human embryonic stem cell research all result in the death of a unique and unrepeatable person, and violate his or her dignity and right to life, it's a human right. And it's a serious choice between life and death, so let us exercise the choice for life. Some things we cannot choose, like paying taxes. Taxes in Ontario are used to fund abortions and provide aid, which is horrendous. However, fundraising and donations are completely voluntary. There are many, many charities that are involved in ethical research and practices, and are not involved in any anti-life efforts. There is choice. For example, the Cancer Research Society does not use embryonic stem cell research. To be clear, this amendment speaks to only human embryonic stem cell research, and not the other types of more effective stem cell research. Pope Francis says, quote, "Some branches of research, in fact, utilize human embryos, inevitably causing their destruction. But we know that no ends even noble in themselves, such as a predicted utility for science, for other human beings, or for society, can justify the destruction of human embryos," end quote. You can't kill a child to cure a child or adult, that's gravely wrong. To be coherent and aligned to the Catholic faith regarding the sanctity of life needs to be our first priority. In the encyclical, The Gospel of Life, St. John Paul states, quote, "We are facing an enormous and dramatic clash between good and evil, death and life, the culture of death and the culture of life. We find ourselves not only faced with, but necessarily in the midst of this conflict. We are all involved, and we all share in it, with the inescapable responsibility of choosing to be unconditionally pro-life," end quote. He also states further, in the same encyclical, quote, "To be truly a people at the service of life, we must propose these truths constantly and courageously, from the very first proclamation of the Gospel, and thereafter in catechesis, in the various forms of preaching, in personal dialogue, and in all educational activity," end quote. As an educational Catholic institution, this pertains specifically to us, to courageously uphold life, for example, as a deciding factor in choosing and making sure the funds collected by fundraising initiatives do not end up inadvertently being used against life. Our schools in the HCDSB facilitate numerous fundraising endeavors for charities and nonprofits. These are wonderful expressions of generosity and solidarity with our local communities and with those abroad, and are always encouraged. However, as a trustee of a Catholic school board, I want to make sure that we promote life, and do not contribute in any way to organizations locally or internationally, which participate in efforts which offend the sanctity of life, human life. in efforts which offend the sanctity of life, human life. This makes sense to me and many others, some of whom have taken the time to write to us uh, in the correspondence section. I would like to thank everyone who has let their voice be heard tonight and for people attending here in the gallery with us tonight. With this amendment, I propose that the fundraising services that we provide be intentional, in good conscience, and in alignment with the Catholic faith. Many people today scrutinize where they give funds and want to know how their money is being used, where their money will end up. It is imperative we do the same with the criteria of upholding the sanctity of life. So that's why I'm bringing forward this amendment.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I will now open the floor. If there are any questions. It'll be questions first and then we'll move to debate. Uh, trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. Okay, trustee Filbert?
Hi, thank you. I just had a question on if any students were consulted in the creation of this amendment. I just want to know if they were asked while this was created.
Thank you, trustee Filbert. Trustee Carabella?
Not this time. I think in the past we had community input. Um, I do know some students who have indicated to me that they are in favor of this amendment.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any other questions. Okay, looks like the questions are complete. So we'll now move to debate. Does anyone have their hand up and would like to debate the amendment that's put forward? Trustee McGuire?
Yeah, thank you through your chair. Thank you for the opportunity to debate this motion. So when I was reading through this amendment and stuff, I just really wanted to think about how this would impact students and specifically how it would impact a student's ability to receive a Catholic education. As we're all here, um, in a Catholic board, we all agree on the value of a Catholic education, and I think that's the most important thing that we have when we're making decisions such like this. So in the past, when this decision was implemented, the restrictions that it created on fundraising for specific charities made it more challenging for students and staff to be able to approve um, and fundraise for specific charities, say, for example, the Canadian Cancer Society or for Terry Fox, um, that were commonly fundraised for before. Um, and I personally remember as a student, and I've spoken to a lot of different students about this as we've been, I've, as I've been thinking about this, and some of our most formative experiences within a Catholic school are these fundraising events and stuff where we are able to come together and raise money for a good cause that we all agree is important, um, say, for example, cancer research. So, um, these instances provide us great opportunities to discuss our Catholic values, you know, the values of almsgiving and stuff. And there's lots of different ways that we can exercise our religious education. And arguably, I would say that Catholic education, when we think about it, it's two parts. It's learning about the theology in our religion, but also putting it into action through teachings like these and stuff. So like the theology that supports that we as Catholics are charitable people, say, for example, charity is one of our gifts and fruits of the Holy Spirit. Our Catholic social teachings call for us to come together for the common good and to do stuff for the good of people. If we're not able to exercise that and stuff, then we are essentially taking away a student's ability to apply their Catholic education within our Catholic schools. Um, so this is why I respectfully oppose this amendment because I really think it's important that students in schools and stuff are able to choose, um, freely choose, I guess, well, within, that is agreed upon within the community of important causes, important to that community that they can fundraise for. Because not only is this really beneficial, but it's also highly crucial to maintaining our nature as a Catholic board. So that's what, what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McGuire. I see trustee Filbert.
Hi, before I start, I just had a question. How much time do we get?
Three minutes.
Speed three minutes. Okay.
But who's counting?
Okay. So I just wanted to say by not only my passion, but passionate about this topic as an individual, but I also recognize that myself, along with trustee McGuire and trustee Yaboa, have been elected by our peers to speak on behalf of issues such as this. So everything that I'm saying right now is not just my personal opinion. As Lauren mentioned, in the time that we've had to review this amendment, our job is to speak to students. And I can confidently say that in my role as a student trustee, this does not align with the interest of students at all, at all. Firstly, looking at our MYSP, and with our goal of creating a safe and welcoming environment, I don't believe that this amendment does that. Not only, sorry, implementing this policy will restrict the very autonomy of students that we at the HCDSB through, seek to create and encouraging students to be independent lifelong learners, promoting programs such as STEAM that encourage beliefs in science. And by being known as a community that's uplifting and supportive to others, this goes against the very values of the HCDSB, the identity we seek to create, and the followings of Christ by banning and fundraising, banning fundraising for organizations linked to abortion, contraception, euthanasia, or embryonic stem, stem cell research. As we do our best to act in the interest of Christ and follow our newly crafted MYSP, why, why would we be voting to limit the support of those who need it most? Which I may also add is in direct contradiction of our believing pillar, mentioning that we honor and respect the inherent dignity of each student and staff member. When we say dignity, we're looking at honor and respect. In voting for the ban of specific organizations, student fundraised money is going towards causes they do not support or causes they are not personally aligned with, disrespecting the belief, opinion, and dignity of our students. Similarly, students gain a lot from being able to participate and fundraise these events. Last year alone, Christ the King raised over a hundred thousand dollars. This year, they've just recently started and they're at forty thousand dollars. I feel like that tells you more than enough where students are at with their support and is disalignment with this amendment. Students care and students will show where they care. They've shown that they are not aligned with this amendment and instead are aligned with providing fundraised money to organizations like the Canadian Cancer Society by funding events such as Relay for Life, by funding Jump Start for Heart, by funding Terry Fox Runs. These events, like Lauren mentioned, are integral to the student experience and are supported by over seven hundred students registered last year. Additionally, as I close, all of these events and all of these organizations are supported by students in their best interest. Students get to develop their own beliefs. And as I mentioned, if we're encouraging students to be independent, autonomous, lifelong learners, I feel that it's unfair to restrict their autonomy. And when I've discussed this with them, they believe that they should be able to choose where their fundraising is going and that it should be causes that they're aligned with. That shouldn't be restricted in, within a policy. So I can confidently say in my role as student trustee, not as an individual, that students are not aligned with this amendment and therefore respectfully oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Filbert. Just under the wire. Well done. Uh, trustee Murphy?
Thank you. And for you. Um, I just wanted to comment that I will be voting in favor of this amendment. Um, as a Catholic school trustee, I have a duty to act in a manner that supports the teachings of the Catholic Church. And the Magisterium clearly opposes abortion, euthanasia, contraception, and research involving human embryos and embryonic stem cell research. So for me, it's a clear, uh, in favor.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Uh, trustee Filbert, your hand is still up. Trustee Murphy, your hand is still up. Okay, I don't see any other hands up for debate. Uh, so the debate is complete. Now we will move to the vote. So I, we're going to take this to a recorded vote, but we are voting on the amendment right now. This is the vote. We are voting for or against this amendment that has been put forward by trustee Carabella.
Point of order or point of clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a closing statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that what you were going to say, trustee Kennedy? Okay, good. Okay, go ahead, trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Well, I hope my fellow trustees agree that this, we, we need this amendment as a guiding principle. Uh, the science is out that, uh, life begins at conception and it goes to natural death. This is not a restrictive amendment. If we see it like that, that, uh, it, it's not. It actually opens the door to many, many charities and nonprofits who work for the common good alongside us and are aligned with the faith. It also makes it clear that no one is excluded from the common good. The unborn, the elderly, the human embryos at their most vulnerable stage in life, all are included and protected and loved with this amendment. They are seen in it. They are not marginalized. They're a priority too. Jesus took care of the poor. He took care, he's, he, he cares about the unborn. He cares about in this, in the embryonic stage of that child. The teaching opportunities to the students and staff and parents are enormous, life-affirming and beneficial, and will hopefully last for their whole lives. This can all be done in a positive way to open horizons to the dignity and sanctity of life. And one way to be coherent with church teaching, fulfilling our mission. This is an expectation of a Catholic school. One of the graduate expectations is to form a student, quote, "who gives witness to Catholic social teaching by promoting peace, justice, and the sacredness of life," end quote. The mission statement of HCDSB says, "We strive to be distinctly Catholic. So let's be distinctly Catholic in our fundraising policy." Catholics have a moral duty to defend and protect the sanctity of life and, and show strong leadership in this regard. This motion does not restrict, restrict charity. It prioritizes charity in keeping with the unborn, in keeping with the child in its embryonic stage, and the vulnerable elderly or ill persons at risk of maid. True charity doesn't kill. I hope that you will support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for the closing, trustee Carabella. We will now move this to a recorded vote. And again, just a reminder that we are voting on the amendment presented to us at this point. Uh, so moving to the vote, trustee, pardon? Want me to state the amendment? Okay. "In keeping with the teachings of the Catholic faith on the sacredness of life from conception to natural death, school and/or board fundraising efforts may not be directed to any registered charity or nonprofit, including subsidiaries, affiliates, and associates that in any way support advocacy programs, financial or material support for abortion, contraception, euthanasia, or human embryonic stem cell research." That is what we are voting on now. Thank you, Superintendent Bickeich. Okay, trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Pardon?
Opposed.
Opposed. Uh, trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Abstain.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
Abstain.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert?
Opposed.
Trustee Yaboa?
Opposed.
Opposed. And I am also opposed. So we have one, two, three, four, five opposed, two in favor, and two abstentions. So the amendment fails. Okay, so thank you, everybody. So now we will be moving on to the actual policy that's in front of us. Trustees, I will now take it to, okay, so now we're going to take it to a recorded vote of the main motion that policy V dash zero-four, school fundraising activities be forwarded to the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five regular board meeting for approval. Okay, let me just get my paperwork in order. So this is the main motion, right? Everyone's on the same page as that. So six point three, main motion. Trustee Agnew?
Sorry, Madam Chair, can we just see the motion on the screen if you don't mind before we take the vote? Just to refresh our memories?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Right, Claudia, can you just scroll up just so we can see the?
See if we can make it so it's all in one. The actual policy itself, Claudia? Trustee Agnew, is there a specific portion?
Nope, thank you. I just wanted to, I do, just wanted to, I knew that we had added something last time. I just wanted to see what that was again. It's been a bit. So that's fine. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, trustees, we're going to go for a vote. Uh, trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up?
Just have a question. The very last red bullet point. Just wonder where that, that came from. That's, that's obviously new. Is that in line with the better school outcome after just the policy committee decided?
Nothing's new on this policy. This is the same policy we voted for at the last policy meeting. And we voted unanimous except one trustee was absent.
Sorry, the red right there?
Which one?
Is that new?
That's the one we voted on in the last policy meeting.
Okay, so, but where did it, where did the wording come from? Is that, was that from, is that in line, is it because of the
Trustee Murphy brought it forward in the last policy meeting that we voted all unanimously and one trustee was not
It's not because of the act, the new act, that it's, you know, PD transparency and all those things. This is not, this is not because of the act.
No, this is because of the policy that we all voted for last policy meeting. Okay, trustee Agnew?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Voting on the policy.
We're voting on the main policy, yeah.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Kelly? Abstain? Sorry, trustee Kelly, I think I'm losing my hearing. Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? In favor, yeah. Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee McGuire?
Uh, just to clarify, we're voting on the initial policy that we already approved.
Correct. The one that went to the board meeting last time is coming back and then we have to re-vote to send it to the, potentially send it to the next board meeting.
In favor. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem. It's good I got it straight. Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa?
In favor.
I am opposed. So we have four opposed plus an abstention, which is a no vote in our bylaws, and one, two, four in favor. So the main motion fails. So nothing goes to the board meeting. This policy will go back in the stack and come back at its next review. Okay? Okay. Okay, so now we're moving on to item six point four, which is policy V dash fifteen, environmental stewardship. Jeff, Superintendent Kroll and Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy V dash fifteen, environmental stewardship be forwarded to the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Duarte? May I please have a seconder? Thank you, trustee Powell. Superintendent Kroll, thank you for your patience and you now have the floor.
Certainly, and I'll be brief through you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to bring policy five dash fifteen, environmental stewardship to the board, uh, policy committee for consideration. Only minor changes been made. Um, we've updated the principles and then there's minor housekeeping changes made throughout. Happy to answer any questions along with Superintendent Merrick. Trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Trustees, I will now open the floor. If anyone has any questions, I see trustee Kennedy, you are first with your hand up. Okay. Trustee McGuire, you are now first. Congratulations with your hand up.
Yeah, sorry. So I was just reading through, um, the policy and on page five, it talks about an HCDSB environmental, um, strategy. Specifically that it's reviewed yearly with staff and trustees. I think that's the wording. I just wanted, wanted to see like where I could find that and stuff, just for my own information so I can be aware of how I can align myself with that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McGuire. Over to you, Superintendent Kroll or Superintendent Merrick?
Certainly, um, with regards to environmental action plan, I think that's something that we've let lapse the last couple of years through COVID. So that's something that we recognize as we reviewing this policy. We definitely want to pick back up. So that's work that we will definitely be committing to, um, as, as part of the review of this policy. I certainly can let you know that, that, um, facilities is a very robust environmental action plan that I think you've seen the fruits of, um, at a number of board meetings though.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Uh, Superintendent Merrick, you have something to add?
Yeah, there, uh, as far as like energy conservation and resource conservation, there is a plan that we update every year and then every five years it's approved by the ministry. When I find the link, I'll send it to you. So.
Thank you. Uh, trustee McGuire, do you have any clarifying? You're good. Thank you very much. I think I see another hand up. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to speak to a point, um, on page two of six, under the requirements. And, um, I did want to amend that. requirements. And I did want to amend that. I did send around a notice that to switch from the sacredness of earth and instead put in inherent goodness of the earth.
Trustee Carabella, have you sent that to Claudia previously to this meeting at all?
Yeah.
You did? Okay, perfect. That's great. So Claudia, again, you have to do the heavy lifting. What subtitle is that under? Principles or?
Under requirements.
Requirements.
The inherent?
Yeah.
Yes.
The grammatical part? Okay. Is anyone opposed to a friendly amendment, or Superintendent Merrick and Superintendent Kroll, does that change any of the meaning of the entire policy? Through you, over to you.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I do know that there was a similar amendment opposed the last time this was reviewed. And I think that the reason that the language there says sacredness of the earth was to have a sort of broader sense that aligns with the traditional ecological knowledge that's referenced a little bit further in the requirements. So I know that we did have discussion at that time, kind of dusting off my memory in terms of that, but I do know that that was, I think it was almost, it was a very similar, obviously. And I know that that was why we ended up leaving it the way it was, is because it was sacredness of the earth is more, aligns more with indigenous perspectives, and we felt that there was other places within here that had that Catholicity that we were trying to strike a balance, as I recall.
Okay, trustee Carabella, so this is an amendment. So is it a friendly amendment, or do we need a mover and a seconder? Is anyone opposed to it? Okay. Okay, so trustee Carabella, you'll move this amendment?
I will.
Okay, so you'll need a seconder? Seconded. It's now on the table for consideration. You can speak to it?
Okay, thank you. Precisely for that reason, that the word sacredness of earth, it's, traditional theology sees the earth as good, but not sacred. And when you look up sacred in the dictionary, it means a something set apart for the worship of God. Creation reveals God's glory, but it itself is not divine. In the La Douti Se by Pope Francis, quote, it says, "At the same time Judeo-Christian thought demythologized nature while continuing to admire its grandeur and immensity, it no longer saw nature as divine." And so what I want to say is that the word sacredness of the earth is what I want to say, that it's implying that it's something sacred, divine. That would require worship, and I think in our policies, we have to be careful of our wording. And the word sacred can also be a bit ambiguous, having different meanings for different people. So it can mean one thing for us Catholics, and mean something entirely different for a non-Christian who may be attending our schools. Sacredness may, for instance, be interpreted by some as Mother Earth giving life, which I suggest to you is incorrect. We know and believe that God is the author of life. The earth is not our mother. We have a spiritual mother in Mary, and our earthly mother is our biological mother. The earth supports life, but it does not give it. Then consider that there are some Eastern religions that understand sacredness differently. For instance, Hinduism holds the cow is sacred. Paganism holds that certain idols are sacred. Some pagan religions worship the earth, the stars, the moon. And we have to be careful about pantheism. Pantheism is the belief that God and the universe are the same things rather than separate. In other words, God is all, and all is God, or God is everything, and everything is God. And we know this is not correct. God created the earth, and in Genesis, it says that after he created it, he said it was good. When he created man, it was very good. Was a big distinction there. So my point is that sacredness could mean different things to different people, and I think we should, that we should be careful, that we do not want to give the impression that we are worshiping the earth, or objects, or plants, or animals, but that we worship the one true God, who by his power created the earth. So I was proposing to rephrase it, and in a way that I think clarifies that, with the amendment would be that it's the inherent goodness of the earth. It's still in keeping with the policy, with all the other parts of the policy, and it provides clarity, truth, and avoids confusion.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So it's now on the table and be spoken to. Are there any questions? Any hands up? Seeing none, we will move forward with a recorded vote on the amendment, which is changing the first bullet point to, from the sacredness of the earth to inherent goodness of the earth. Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Yaboa online?
In favor.
In favor, thank you. Trustee Filbert?
Abstain.
Pardon? I really am losing my hearing. Abstain? Thank you. Trustee McGuire?
Abstain.
Abstain there. I am opposed. One, two, three, four. So six are opposed, three in favor. Okay, so the amendment fails, so now we're going back to the main motion. Does, oh, I see trustee Carabella has your hand up, and trustee Murphy. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going back. So Superintendent Kroll and Superintendent Merrick have spoken to it. Does anyone have any further clarifying questions? If not, we will move forward with a recorded vote on the main motion presented. Seeing none, I will go forward with a recorded vote. Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa online?
In favor.
Thank you. I am also in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, one, two, three opposed. Policy V dash 15, has, majority has passed. This policy will be brought forward to the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting. Okay, so moving forward, we're on 6.5, our final action item of the evening. Policy V dash 17, request for promotion and distribution of program backslash activity-related materials through board schools. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy V dash 17, distribution of materials be forwarded to the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? Looking for a mover. Thank you, trustee Powell. Looking for a seconder?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte? Superintendent Bukic, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Trustees, this policy and the associated procedure have been reviewed as part of the regular review cycle. We have updated the name of the policy to simplify the title and to reflect our updated processes. The associated policies and procedures have been updated with some of our current policies. We've also clarified the purpose and application, so it's clear to the community at large. The principles and requirements have been updated to also reflect our updated processes for distributing materials from charitable and not-for-profit organizations, and we've done some minor housekeeping changes throughout. Happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukic. Trustees, I will now open the floor. If anyone has any questions. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. I just had a question, whether we do a lot, do we have a lot of materials being distributed to the students and parents? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Through you to you, Superintendent Bukic.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. We have a lot of requests for distribution of materials, and so we have a very robust process that we go through. We've updated the process so that applications come online. And we are, thanks to Communications and Andrea's team, we are, we've created a community board that will be linked to our HCDS board, so that we're controlling the information that gets distributed through schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukic. Trustee Carabella, do you have any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, please lower your hand. Thank you. Okay, so I don't see any other questions from any other trustees, so we can move forward with a recorded vote on the motion in front of us for policy V dash 17. I will now take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa online?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
I am also in favor, so unanimously, V 17 will now be brought forward. It's approved, but brought forward to the April 22, 2025 regular board meeting. Okay, so we move on to item number seven, which is entitled Discussion Items. We don't have any discussion items this evening. Item number eight, so information items, so we have to make a change because one of the information items on there has now, was an action item. So 8.7.1 on this information item is now deleted, and the other ones will be 8.7.1, 8.7.2, you get the trend, 8.7.3, 0.4, 0.5. Okay, just to note that. Item 8.7 lists the upcoming agenda items for the next policy committee meeting on May 13, 2025. There is no miscellaneous information that I have. Just confirming with Superintendent Bukic, or as well? Okay, correspondence is provided as information. There is no in-camera agenda this evening. We do not need a motion to excuse. There was no one absent. They're either in person or online. A German in closing prayer. May I please have a motion to adjourn this evening? Trustee Saunders, may I please have a seconder? Thank you, trustee Agnew. All in favor? Is anyone opposed to leaving this evening? I have two hands up for that one. Okay, thank you. We will now end the meeting with a closing prayer by trustee Kennedy.
Thank my student trustee sitting next to me for this closing prayer. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. God of all growth, we ask you to bless all students in Catholic schools. May they remain constantly curious in their pursuit of knowledge and truth. May they use their gifts and talents to spread your light and love throughout the earth, and may all of their learning ultimately draw them closer to your Son, Christ the Teacher. We make this prayer in your holy name, amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and Spirit.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for their patience, and please have a safe travel home.